This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council comes to order. Uh, call the room, please.
Terry McClung.
Here.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
Dee Perkypile.
Here.
Bryce Zeller.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
We have six.
All right, please stand for the place to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, brings us to approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
So moved.
The floor is open. Ms. Snyder.
I'd like to add in your new business, or wherever you'd like it, just a quick wrap-up of the, uh, energy symposium from last week, couple of minutes worth.
Is this just gonna be a, just a report?
Just kind of let people know whatever, kind of, but like maybe a couple of minutes.
Does it need to be added to new business, though? Can it be done in council comments?
How about council comments?
I've got other stuff in comments. I don't care, wherever you want it.
They have those new solar sidewalks.
You'll need a second for your...
Boy, are they cool.
Second.
Oh, forgot.
Okay, I'll do it.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir, unfinished business number five postponed, please.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Gee.
Any other changes, deletions? All right, all in favor of the amended agenda say aye.
Aye.
Are they opposed? All right, moves us on to, um, approval of the amendments from May the 28th, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are they opposed? Okay. Moves us to commission committee authority reports inspired terms. The planning commissioner, Mr. Morris, has requested the council approve Ms. Snyder as the council member to the planning commission. I think she'll be the second member to the planning commission.
That would be a temporary position only.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate, I'd like to nominate Ms. Snyder, planning commission.
I'll send in that.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Snyder, you're on. You have a copy of application for Anna Alman, who is renewing for position number one on the hospital commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anna's been on there a long time. As far as committee reports, unless there's somebody here from Parks, uh, HDC or Cemetery Commission, that will wrap up those meetings, or bring us to public comments. Oh, here, oh, sorry. Oh, we got a few tonight. Okay, top of the list, Daniel Jackson. Daniel Jackson. Hey, Dan.
Hi. Hello, Daniel Jackson, Vice Chairman, Parks and Rec, Eureka Springs, 26th Council. I'd like to bring up the topic of ordinance 2211, which is to be presented at this table today. I would like to remind, uh, this, this committee that Parks and Rec has put together a very well-planned-out proposal that uses very different aspects of the road and trail systems within Eureka Springs, Arkansas. I would also remind you that this was done by all guidelines and proposals set before our table by you all. With that in mind, uh, and please forgive me for my, for my somewhat of pausing, I would like to say that this proposal has also been highly supported by local and tourists alike. Along with the ordinance 2211, this piece of property, which has become a question, has become a very vital aspect to this plan. Again, this plan has been highly supported, and again, done accordance to what was presented to us by you all. I would also like to bring up the topic of this during the last meeting. According to my regulation, or memory, I do not remember once the desire of a city entity wanting or needing to use for said piece of property, uh, within an extreme vital plan involving all aspects of Eureka Springs. Not once did, uh, I hear that get brought up in your all's conversation. You have to forgive me for this part of what I have to say, because I uphold the highest respect for, for every one of you on this committee, and this committee as a whole. I understand the responsibility and the power that sits within each one of your seats. But sitting and not hearing the most important aspect of this topic, not getting talked about around this table, brings up the question, the motives and even maybe alliances that might lie underneath the table, or behind the curtains. I say this with the utmost respect. Again, I understand the responsibility and the power that each and every one of you hold. Thank you for your time, please keep that us in mind, meaning Parks and Rec, when you all talk about your topic.
Thank you, Anna. Ms. Glenda Satterfield.
The AC's on and the window's open.
Maybe so, it was really stuff in here, yeah.
I apologize for the... Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm Glenda Satterfield, I'm with a new group in town called Respect Eureka. I want to urge you to vote for the noise ordinance. I also just want to express my devastation for the homeowners that are gonna have to endure the, are looking at enduring the motorcycle garage. I feel like the Crescent needs to be a good neighbor to our citizens. And I'd also like to say that I'm in favor of vacating Rock Street, but...
Thank you, ma'am. Donna Hersi.
Yes. My name is Donna Hersi. My children and I own most of the lots on Jackson Street that run the length of the Basin Park parking lot. When I bought my property, property twenty-something years ago, the parking lot was not an issue. The noise level has always been moderate. Then about three or four years ago, when motorcycles with obviously illegal pipes were encouraged to come to our town, I soon learned the police had no intention of doing anything to discourage the noise. Now the Basin Park Hotel wants to house bikes right under our homes, in my son's case, less than twenty feet from his bedroom window, and not much further from mine. The bike owners will and do congregate in the parking lot. They will and do constantly rev their engines as they warm their motorcycles up. They will and do run their bikes while they visit with each other, shouting their conversations over the sound of their bikes. They will motorace up steep mountain street to Spring Street with a deafening roar without the slightest consideration for the incredible assault of noise on the neighborhood. Once you allow this 12-bike space, you must be aware that it won't stop there. There will be many more units, and you will have brought this plague of noise down North Main Street, which has just recently gone through a revival of upscale galleries, restaurants, and breakfast, and bed and breakfast lodgings. Vote against this, it doesn't belong in the hollow where sound reverberates. Our property values are being destroyed, and our quality of life degraded. Show us you are concerned for the welfare of the residents you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. David Chatter, Chater, Chatter.
Is the microphone on, or is it just not getting close enough?
I'm going deaf, I can't hear him.
That's not amplified, anyway.
Oh, why don't I count? No. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I can hear him. My name is David Chatter, uh, I live at 37 Jackson Street. The garage, uh, that is motorcycle garage is planned, uh, that's my bedroom window is going underneath. I already get to listen to the absolutely entertaining crowd coming back from the parks at night. I get to listen to the guys rev their bikes up in the morning, uh, when I've gotten off of work at one o'clock in the morning. I have here a copy of a letter, uh, that the hotel sent all of you gentlemen, uh, where apparently Mr. Ott doesn't know that I'm male. He refers to, uh, one female causing a lot of trouble at the meeting, at the planning commission meeting. Actually, it was, every one of the butters of the parking lot was there at the planning commission and spoke out against it. Anyone that's seen either a copy of the tape or transcript of the meeting knows that. The, so the science fiction that you were sent is nothing but. And I urge you not to put this underneath my house. The only comparison that I can make is if I sat in front of your house and blasted rap music out the window, how long would it be before you were calling the police on me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Susan Morrison.
Hi, everybody.
Okay.
Short Susan. I'm here to speak to you about the, uh, the right-of-way on the Sweeney Street, or whatever that is. Here to talk to you about our trail system in our town, and how important it is, and how important it is that you do everything you can to sit on things and wait and protect passing that, and approving that trail system. And there's a real good reason for it. I just heard a guy in here really upset because of noise from motorcycles. Open carry in Eureka. Bad news, bad news, bad news. Everything that's coming out of this town right now is really not very good. And our businesses are tanking. We've had two galleries this month leave. One is completely shutting down, and guess where the other one went? The square in Bentonville. Eureka Springs has hardcore competition right now, and you'd better look very seriously at it. And that competition really sat back and said, okay, how do we compete with Eureka? We're gonna have our museum, we're gonna have our fancy hotel, we're gonna have our square, we're gonna have something else. Because Eureka has this beautiful wild land that's all around it. How can we compete with that? Trails. Let's do a trail system. And they have, and they've done a trail system that's getting national recognition for them. I went to a meeting not too long ago, and in that meeting were people like Cressy and Bell, and are really the top people in our community, were sitting in that room, there was a hundred of us at least. You know who was there speaking to us? The National Park Service. When was the last time those guys were here? All right? A lot of other people were here like that. National Bike, you know, Bicycle Group. Wouldn't it be wonderful if Eureka Springs could talk about something besides how many people are dying on 62 on motorcycles? When the last time Hells Angels came through and murdered somebody? And who's open carrying today? What if they could talk about stepping back in their own history and making Eureka Springs what it was? Why everybody came here? They came here for their health, that's why Greg and Dan were at that meeting. They came here to walk the mountains, drink the water, and have the camaraderie, the peaceful heart that made them feel better. That's our greatest asset. And our trails were a huge part of that, that's why they were created in the first place, so these people could do that. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to speak to something amazingly positive about our town, we have an opportunity to do something amazingly positive for our town, we have an opportunity to make a louder noise than all the noise that's being heard. But you gotta protect that opportunity, okay? All you gotta do is say, let's support this trail system, let's help make this happen. Kids wanna go out and maintain the trails, our school kids, something to do besides whatever that is on TV. And incorporating our children, incorporating our seniors, incorporating our people that have their dogs, and our people on the bicycles. Just at the Exteria, people, Exterra this weekend, do you know who helped me work the Exterra this weekend? Sandy Edwards, Deputy Director of Crystal Bridges Museum of American Art, was right here. She spent all weekend in Eureka, had a great time. She'll go back and she'll talk about how amazing we are, because she got to see the right things, okay? I'm just asking you, wait, stop, pause, hold off, and really look at that trail system. Your Parks Department has worked really hard on this, so do it.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. You wanna take this with you? You left it there. Okay. We went a little long on that one. Would you send Randy in, please?
Okay.
Thank you. That would be Randy Woodward for the record. I should both come in at the same time. Hey, Randy. Thank you, sir.
Good, good. Well, hello, I'm Randy Woodward. I'm here to support the trails. We just experienced, like Susan said, an amazing thing this weekend, not only with Sandy here, but we had friends come from four different areas that are into this, they're really into it. Now, this is business, this, this boils down to bringing another whole layer of the type of business that can support Eureka, and we can support them. This feeds us. Now, this is based on basically one thing. Susan and I travel coast to coast and bordered border every year. We're in small towns like this because they border national parks and other places, very similar, competing for that same dollar. Now, it boils down to one thing, that's leadership. That's you guys, that's us, making a statement about who we are and what we want. So what do we want? Do we only wanna encourage this, or run more of it off? You know, that's the bottom line. Leadership, right now, will make a huge difference down the road. It's up to you guys, make the right call. It's money in all of our pockets, are out, that's what it boils down to. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Dick Titus. Mr. Titus, welcome.
Thank you.
Three minutes. I should be telling everybody that, but I just forgot.
Hello, my name is Dick Titus. I'm with the new group, Respect Eureka. I moved here with my partner 26 years ago. I have loved living in Eureka Springs. We bought a house that had rotted porches, windows that were broken, ceiling fans that had the blades shot off of them by a pellet gun, shag carpeting, a dirt driveway, a backyard that was beaten bare by dog running the fence. We put all of our energy and a lot of our money into upgrading and restoring this house. Many of you been to our house, it has a private backyard with a nice garden. What a wonderful place to sit and watch the squirrels run the fence, birds eat at the bird feeder, and then maybe take a bath, in our bird bath. We can have a drink, read a book, or just lie on the ground and imagine what shape a cloud is that's floating above us. With all this said, I'm here to support the noise ordinance. I live on the upper historic loop, where there's less traffic than when we moved here, but a large increase of noise has occurred. I am not able to enjoy my home and the beauty of my environment because of the constant noise on weekends and periodically during the summer. We have asked very little from the city of Eureka Springs, we have been model citizens that support and promote this city. It is not necessary for it to be so quiet that I can hear crickets chirping, but I would like to be able to hear all of the conversation inside my house by reducing the noise, noise level on the street. So I'm asking you to pass and enforce the noise ordinance. The parking garage is a separate subject, but I'm not for it, I'm not against it, I just ask that it go back to planning, that an ordinance be written, so that we set a precedence for the first parking structure, so that the second, second one could be two or three stories, 200 spaces. It has to do with lighting and drainage and ingress and egress and safety, there's a lot, a lot of things that need to be addressed in our ordinance before we build the first structure. So I'd like for the garage to go back to planning, let planning and the applicant work on our ordinance, it'll slow it down just a little bit, but it will be built, and we won't have to worry about utility easements, widening the streets later, we will have thought through this in a, in a intelligent manner. The third thing is, the trails committee. Now, I know that we're $2 million in debt and bonds, I also know that we need a million dollars for a sewer for the hospital, possibly. Black Bass Lake needs to be, the dam needs to be repaired. If the park can run, can raise $250,000, and they didn't include a lot of things like parking at the trails' heads, building these buildings to hold brochures and vending machines, and commercial-grade trash cans and benches, all that money is not even talked about. I personally would like to see a swimming pool at Lake Leatherwood. A family can go out there, some people can bike, some people can, can use the boats, some people can swim, some people can picnic, some people can, you know, you can stay out there all day doing all these activities. Exterra is great, it is great publicity for Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and it belongs at Lake Leatherwood. When we get money to build trails, buddy, I'll get a shovel, if I'm 65 or 95, I'll get out there and help you. But as a small town with limited money, we have to think about these things in priorities. And, uh, that's my spin, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Adam Beasat. That's what it looks like, anyway. I thought I recognized an handwriting.
Thank you, thank you guys for letting me speak. I'm Adam Beasat, I was born and raised in Eureka Springs, I'm a member of the trails committee, and I use trails two to three times per week. I wanna paint a picture to you of the type of people who walk, hike, run, and bike trails. They're outdoor-loving, easygoing, friendly people, they're quick to smile and say hello, they're perfect for Eureka. These people wanna be in the woods, they don't wanna be near houses and sidewalks, and that's why we wanna put these trails as far from houses as possible. They normally keep moving and don't stay in one place on the trail for very long. These people are not troublemakers, and don't care what people are doing in their houses or yards, they just keep moving on the trail. We continue to talk to more towns and cities that do not have any crime problems on their trails. Thomas Accord has already said that the police department will patrol the trails. This is what the majority of trails will look like. We will have a couple handicapped, accessible, hard-surface trails, but the majority will look like this. These trails are almost invisible unless someone is using them at that moment. Tourism is Eureka Springs' main industry. Trail users could add a significant tourist group to our town year-round. I love the car and motorcycle groups that come to town, but this could bring tourists to town who are almost noise-free, they don't make traffic any worse, and still visit town in the winter. In order to have a successful trail system, we need connectivity, we need to make connections, connect kids to schools, visitors to historic places, residents to their jobs, in-town trails to Black Bass Lake to Leatherwood, connect residents to the woods. The more connections we have, the happier the public will be. The large majority of Eureka Springs residents want in-town trails. Please represent their wants and needs by not vacating any land, and by approving the trails' master plan. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Al Larson. Mr. Larson.
Hello, I'm Al Larson, and...
Am I there? Okay, I want to speak on behalf of these trails.
Not only am I a bicycler, I get on my bike and I ride, and it's usually at Leatherwood or at Black Bass, sometimes the rural roads, but I would ride these trails in town, and I'm here to lobby on behalf of those trails, and the kind of people that we're going to have that come to Eureka Springs to use the trails, to say nothing of many of you right here who love to hike and be outdoors and have that opportunity, so there's my vote. And I encourage you to do us this favor, and we can't give away Rock Street, we need to maintain as many of these as we can, so that we can have a contiguous set of trails here. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Will Wall. Will?
Hi, how are you?
How are you, sir?
Yes, I'd like to speak to you guys tonight about the trail system. I heard someone earlier speak about how we could afford to pay for this, and I'd like to show you how. Mountain bikers and hikers burn a tremendous amount of calories. In other words, they get hungry and they get thirsty, oftentimes gathering at local, local watering holes discussing tales of their ride while consuming mass amounts of food and drink. Cities and towns all across America are seeing huge benefits from the inner-city trails by luring citizens and tourists which spend money on gas, food, and are lodging either before or after their mountain bike or road bike ride. Sustainable-built trails pose some upfront costs for construction, but are virtually free to maintain once-built. A professionally-built sustainable trail has little to no maintenance needed once-built. Further maintenance is usually performed free by the local bikers, which often have trail days to clear fallen debris from storms. The economical impacts of the inner-city trails are astronomical. I have had the pleasure of being a part of several trail builds in North Carolina, which where I'm a transplant from, for which the local towns are now reaping huge economic benefits of increased tourism. And trust me, guys, this is the kind of tourist you want. One such town being North Wicksboro, which used to be known for its bootleg whiskey and marijuana, is now known for its amazing 54-mile bike trail around the local Kurskot Dam and Lake, which has financed, which was financed by tourism, and the tourism board. Eureka Springs could greatly benefit from such trails as a business owner. Here, I see great potential for the town of Eureka Springs monetarily with the addition of these proposed hiking and biking trails, not to mention encouraging healthier town. You see, mountain bikers, just as motorcyclists, they have a wallet, too, and they spend it. And, uh, so I appreciate your time, thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, sir. Josh Vale.
But my name's Josh Vale, and I'm here to talk about the trails. I'll outline a few things. Reason why I want them is because it's a positive outlet for stress compared to bars and stuff. It promotes a healthy lifestyle. It's a really good way to spend time with your friends and meet new people in a positive environment. It's a different environment than the bars. Why other people will enjoy them? It's a good way for families to get away from their electronic devices that distract them from their daily lives. It's also a really good time to get together and actually talk rather than just sit there and mess with your phone. It's a non-intimidating trail system that is good for all demographics, unlike Lake Leatherwood, which some people are a little afraid of. People will be able to see the beauty of the Ozarks and still be in-town, in walking distance of all of our businesses. And you know, this town needs it because we need to keep up to date with what other towns are doing. They're already doing this. An example of that is Park City, Utah. They were named by Outside Magazine "The Best City in America", and it's because they have 400 miles of trail system. And it's a non-stop flight from Park City to XNA. And everyone, we need to ask what's best for this town, not for a few people. We need to ask what's best for everyone. And do we want to be the next great town in America? Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Ed Leswig?
Patron Silver, please.
Yes, it is. Hello, Ed.
Good evening. How are you, Morris?
Good, sir. How are you?
I have three things to bring to the council tonight. The first one is asking you to respect the people of Eureka Springs and support the noise ordinance. The second thing is to show respect for the Planning Commission and the citizens who spoke before it and reject the building of the motorcycle garage in C-1 area. And the third thing is to ask you to give to consideration this evening to the licensing of multifamily buildings and businesses. The changes that are incorporated in the document you should have were gone over and reviewed with the building official, and he met with his approval. The changes are to Sections 1, 3, and 6. But I urge you to show respect for Eureka Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan Porter? How are you?
Hi. My name is Susan Porter. I want to thank you all for your service. I know it's a hard job you have. I'm a property owner. I live at 38 Pine Street. And I'm here to talk about two issues tonight. Both deal with noise pollution. I think noise pollution is just like any other pollution. It's not anything specific to Eureka Springs. Cities and states throughout the country have already adopted ordinances and guidelines. Noise can be controlled. Not everybody who makes noise is breaking the law. Some are by other state guidelines, and I think we can measure that. This is a quality-of-life issue for us who live in Eureka. I moved here because it's quiet. I've lived in the French Quarter in New Orleans, and I've lived on Dixon Street. I knew when I was going there what I was going to be getting, and I was fine with that. I moved here because it's quiet, and that's what I wanted. I've retired here. No one wants to lose sleep. No one wants to have their conversation interrupted by noise. And I think that the, I'm urging you to please pass an ordinance, a noise ordinance with teeth. Please make sure that it can be enforced and it will be enforced. Secondly, as far as the parking garage for motorcycles, I think you're plopping this into the middle of a neighborhood. These people have lived here. They are, they did not move here expecting motorcycles in their backyard. Sound rises, the sound will be rising right up to their homes. I don't know any of these people. I'm coming here because I love Eureka and I love the community. I just think things need to be looked at for what they really are. I think you have two choices on this parking garage. You can deny it because it is inappropriate. It's inappropriate in this spot. I'm not saying it's inappropriate in another spot. Or you can side with the property, the owner of the property, who is speculating that this will increase his business, thus increase the community economy. Maybe, maybe not. I'm not a statistician, but it seems to me that 12 parking plate spots for motorcycles is not that big a deal unless you're living right above it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Melissa Green? Melissa Green.
Hi, I'm Melissa Green, 17 Bridge Street. I've got about three things to talk about. First of all, I'd like to see you pass the noise ordinance and enforce it. I'm not against any group or anything. I like the visitors that come here. They're important to us. But we do need to have some enforcement on some of the noise, and it's not just what we've been talking about. The other thing is I want to talk about trails. I am not against trails. They are a wonderful addition to this area. What I am against is that they go through people's properties. I have one property on the master plan that you will have to walk through. One of my property's driveway by the windows of my guest to get to the trail. I also manage another cottage that you can reach out and touch right here, the window from the trail of the house. The person that works for me and cleans is two doors down. You have to, you have to go like this, but you can touch his house from the trail. That's not right, and it's behind their houses. The other things is I have walked all the trails in town in the last couple of months because I've become outspoken about it. They're beautiful. They are lovely. They are our jewels. But they're poorly maintained. They need to be better maintained, and I'm worried that these new trails are not going to be maintained. I'm also worried, I'm 61 years old, but I get out, all of you know me, I'm out there walking all the time, walking my dog. I can't walk most of these trails. Why can't some of these trails be more for like Joyce or Mickey or Terry over there? Well, and Dee, how about you?
Cherry Addix.
You know, and it's back to... It's back to, I don't want to be the monkey in the theme park. And, you know, I think with some better planning, these trails can come to fruition. I think they're going to be great. I think you guys are doing a great job. Please pass the noise ordinance and please vacate Rock Street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bo Satori?
She knows I have bad knees. And though I didn't want to, it rained.
Thank you all for being here. I'm Bo Satori. I just came to speak in favor of the trails proposition, as so many have already spoken before. More clearly, I want to be, I'm here in opposition to vacating Rock Street. All of our city was laid out just before the invention of the horseless carriage. So when people are using reasons, well, we've never paved that street. We've never used that street for traffic or anything else like that. That's not the way the street was meant to be used. I mean, if it's a walking, it's a pass-through, it's a right-of-way for a horse or for a foot, that's what we originally designed the city around doing. When, I have a lot of friends who are concerned about the trails or proximities to their property and the like. Take a ride around the loop. Every doorway is within 20 feet of the street. Downtown, everything's within five feet of the street. Our doorways are close to the streets throughout the city. That's part of the charm of Eureka Springs. I've noticed a flurry of efforts to vacate streets in Eureka in this past year. A lot of those precede sales. Generally, when I see somebody applying for a street vacation, they're also throwing up a "for sale" sign, which tends to go hand-in-hand. Of course, that's been for the last 30 or 40 years that I've seen it. There was a time echoing a little bit of what Susan Morrison had to say, that there was a time when Eureka Springs was really a leader in cultural advancement and things that we were doing to make it more attractive to come here and to, more importantly, to be here. Recently, I've visited all of our sister cities or our rival destinations, and they're all making a big effort to do everything we've done in the last 10 years, except like Fayetteville area, they're doing it better. You go to Rogers, you go to Springfield, even Branson. I walked six miles down Branson the other evening and four miles back just studying their problems. But I watched a presentation by Mayor Presley on what they're planning to do to improve their city and to make it more charming with trees and sidewalks and everything that they need desperately up there. Right now, what we've been, I haven't seen us really getting much done in the past decade or at least the last few years. And so I'd like to see us doing more to make a visual difference to Eureka Springs. There are lots of houses here and there that through the efforts of people who've come here and bought them are being beautifully restored, and we're thankful for those. The Queen Anne Mansion is quite a monument to our Victorian city. But then we have the O'Reilly's Automotive built, right in the historic district. Now, Rappaport's rebuilt, and they did some brick and stonework, and they made an effort to kind of look like they're in Eureka Springs. Even the subway, it's far more charming than it ever was before. But then O'Reilly's, it's in the historic district. Where was the effort to even make a gesture at being something different in Eureka Springs? It's not. It could be anywhere. And it's a blight on the community, and all that they do to make the Queen Anne beautiful is lost in just one drive-by of the O'Reilly's Automotive. And so I feel like the Planning Commissioner, or at least the HTC, deserves some shame there.
Your turn, Mr. Paul.
Okay. And the last thing I want to say is natural gas. Recently voted to switch engines on a tram. Should have considered natural gas rather than gasoline. LA switched all their buses to natural gas. We certainly can start here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Foggo needs to come sign in if he wants to speak. Pat Matsukis?
Good evening. Pat Matsukis, 5 Mountain Street. C-1, the Victorian Commercial District is designated to preserve the historic character of the area by encouraging uses that will not cause the decline or destruction of historic or otherwise culturally significant features. Commercial uses in the district require a central location and must be accessible from routes entering the city. The Victorian Commercial District is intended to provide uses that are more pedestrian-oriented and in harmony within the historic and city's concept than the contemporary Commercial District. To protect and enhance the value and character of the area, the city mandates that all future development be subject to land use. To me, this means that as a property owner, there are many of us that live in this area above the proposed motorcycle shed. We are all going to be financially impacted over someone's need that for some reason is, seem to be greater than ours. And I don't understand it. I can't even understand how we're entertaining this conversation. I have a letter here. Suzie Allen, my neighbor from Rose of Sharon was out of town. She could not be here. She asked me to put it into the record that she did not, is not in favor of this. She is terrified about the noise and the devaluation at the Rose of Sharon. My neighbors Jack and Paul could not be here tonight, and their letter reads as follows. As business and property owners of Mountain Eclectic, we stand in support of the Planning Commission's decision not to approve an undefined building called the Motorcycle Shed across the street from us in the Basin Park parking lot. It is detrimental to our business, especially our property values, and doesn't enhance our trying-to-grow gallery district. This past weekend, it was difficult for folks attending the auditorium and main stage to even hear through the noise of the bikes that revved. And it doesn't mean that all bikes revved, it's just a noise factor that we now have. This proposed shed gives the impression that it will hold a lot of bikes, but we think that it will only add to the chaos of Mountain and Main. Note, the hotel already owns a shuttle and commands our own loading zones on Spring Street, allowing them other opportunities, we believe, to create better and more viable parking for their guests. So having said this, I say to you that in C-1, we have not defined even what this is yet. And so maybe it should go back to planning for more discussion. I mean, certainly, that's a possibility. Me, I have spent almost $12,000 on my house this past year. That shed is not going to do anything for my commercially-owned property and the rest of us that are in that valley. And I think that you need to take this into consideration, especially if any of you are thinking of running for reelection. Thank you. And also, I support the trails. I do not support any of the trail stuff. Look, when we talked about trails a while ago, the bottom line was, I think many people agreed they wanted trails from town to Black Bass and town to Leatherwood. But tearing up more of our precious downtown commodities to create more trails that we can't maintain, parks can't even maintain what they have now, and we throw this in their pocket, how are they going to do this? Financially, it's impossible. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Stanley? Shouldn't get out.
Please let her out. Is this thing a...
How you doing, sir?
Charles Stanley. I live in 50 Dicky. I am really for the parks to maintain and put in a bicycle pathway. And however, I live on Dicky Street. And if you don't know where Dicky Street is, it's a street that's no longer maintained by the city, although it's still a city. They no longer deliver or pick up my trash. And I've been maintaining that street all along for my own, so I can get to my property. Well, unfortunately, with the proposed map here, it shows it'll go right through and will preclude parking, preclude even access to my house. So what I'd really like for you to do is take a look at the map and figure out who is impacted. Who are impacted? Who are the people that are directly impacted with this pathway? I mean, I'm a biker. I love to motor, I love to ride a mountain bike. I'm a runner. I run these trails in this town. And, but personally, I feel that the idea of putting a pathway and keeping availability of parking in front of my house or even getting to my house, I can't go with that. And secondly, and third, maybe true share, I'd like for you to pass the noise ordinance law. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ken Fogo? 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 Either one, okay.
Oh.
Both are.
Oh.
Okay. How you doing, sir?
My name's Ken Fogo. I'm here tonight to show my support for the noise ordinance. I know that it's the, sometimes the 90% that makes the other 10% look bad. And I just think that this governing body should protect all our rights. There's federal mandated laws about noise levels. There's state mandated laws for noise levels, and I think the city should have mandated noise levels enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That will conclude our public comments. That moves us on to unfinished business. Number one would be discussion of ordinance 2209. Third reading.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Doors open.
Move to suspend rules and, well, actually, I move to amend ordinance number 2209. And that amendment is relating to the discussion about music festivals and some of the latitudes that we need to eliminate with granting the extended permits. And I have something written here, so I'm asking for a second on an amendment. 2209. Second.
Amendment and second. Any discussion, further discussion on it?
Well, I'd like...
Well, I'd like...
Let's wait to hear it first.
What amendment?
Yeah. Under 716.07, and I'll read you, it's just a short paragraph. The mayor city clerk may issue special permits allowing the production of amplified sound in commercially-zoned districts to be extended until 2:00 AM and at a level not to exceed 85 dB for festivals and special events. Now, what, the intention behind drafting the noise ordinance in the first place was to tighten up the amount of noise in the city. Some people have been getting festival permits for May Fine Arts, which is not in keeping with the intent behind the noise ordinance. So basically, what I'm wanting to do is to remove the line for festivals and special events and replace it with a line that says, "For city sanctioned music festivals." Because if we leave it just as festivals, then anybody that wants to call themselves a festival then can go down to City Hall and get a permit to allow amplified music until 2:00 AM at 85 dB. And we want to eliminate noise, not to encourage more noise. So by restricting it solely to city sanctioned music festivals, it would address what the intent behind the noise ordinance really initially was, and that was to allow during Blues Festival and Jazz Festival and things like that for people on their decks to go until 2:00 AM.
What was that number again?
7.16.07.
7.16.07?
07.
Mr. DeVito.
Can I ask James a question, please, sir? That's in the current ordinance, not in the addendum ordinance that we're talking about right now.
Correct. I'm wanting to add it to the body of...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because it didn't fit this one, so...
Right.
Okay. So how do we, the topic is this, is it okay? It's noise, that really kind of still fits under it, doesn't it?
Do we need a separate thing?
Mr. Cork.
I do not have a copy of whatever it is that you're wanting to amend.
There seems to be a bit of a disconnect, because the, the way it happens with special events is their, special event is city sanctioned, and the people who get the amplified sound permits, which some folks like to call noise permits, those people have, they're in a commercial district, they have outdoor seating, they're paid up on their alcohol beverage taxes, they go through a checking, they get reviewed in order to get these annual permits. And then every time a city sanctioned festival comes up, which is a music festival, basically, it's not just any festival, it's only for three days. It's not for the month. It's for a specific weekend that is city sanctioned, outdoor seating, commercial district, 85 dB, for a specific length of time. So it's not as open-ended as certain parts of the code, you have to look in other parts of the code to see what the restrictions for that particular thing are.
Maybe we just need to add the word "music festival" to be more specific, like James suggested.
Mr. DeVito.
I appreciate Madam Cork and what she said there, but she did use just the word "festival", and I think that was the point James was making. We need to make it specific to "music festival," because I think there are some people that have come along, that it wasn't a music festival, it was just a band playing for something else.
Then they didn't have a permit.
We don't have it.
That's a different permit.
I'll go back to May Fine Arts Festival. You could, in essence, get a three-day permit, you know, every week throughout the festival and have, you know, four to five, a total of 15 days that you could be playing music at 85 dBs until 2:00 AM in the morning. This just makes it more concise. It doesn't leave any ambiguity in the ordinance. It addresses what we're trying to do here, and that's shrink the amount of noise in the city, not to expand it. And by just replacing the generic term "festivals and special events," because everything could be a special event, and everything can be a festival, and some of them being a month-long, and by replacing it with "city sanctioned music festivals," we eliminate that loophole that some people will take advantage of.
Is that, were you making a motion, James?
I made a motion to amend ordinance 2209.
And I seconded it.
I think I had a seconded.
I seconded it.
Yes.
So the question still remains, can we do that as part of this, or does it need to be a separate issue to make that word change?
Well, the ordinance you're now considering on the table covers noise in general. It's not specific to one thing. It could be an amendment to it.
To this or to the original?
To that ordinance right there. It could change the wording of the original municipal code.
Well, the original part isn't in this chapter. This is a new chapter we're doing.
No, it's not a new chapter. It's a subchapter.
Section, subchapter.
So it is all part of the noise chapter.
So we would be passing this, including the amendment James gave?
James could have that attached to this as an amendment, yes.
Okay.
Give it up, good.
Y'all follow that?
We can do it.
I would be more comfortable doing James's suggestion as a separate amendment to the entire noise ordinance, because I don't have a copy of what it is he's talking about in front of me, so...
Right here, Joyce.
Well, I know, but I, the quick study, I would like to know, I mean, it sounds to me like what we're doing is preventing a whole lot of people who can now get permits to not get permits, because they're not city sanctioned. I mean, according to what the city clerk read, and I would be much more comfortable if I could have this ordinance in front of me and study it myself and then see what it is that James is amending, because at this point, I don't know what we're doing.
He's just clarifying "music."
Mr. DeVito.
Well, but that isn't, that isn't what the city clerk was talking about.
It's very simple. There's a portion of the line that reads, "For festivals and special events," and I'm just wanting to change that to "City sanctioned music festivals," because we did issue a permit during May Fine Arts for music that went till 2:00 AM at 85 dBs for May Fine Arts, and that, in my opinion, is not what the intent of the noise ordinance originally was. With this generic festival, then anybody can go down for any festival and get a permit to play music until 2:00 AM, or what's even worse is just the word "special events," which is a very wide-ranging category. So I'm wanting to just narrow those two words down to "city sanctioned music festivals," because that's in keeping with the intent of granting to bars and restaurants who have a permit for their decks to have amplified music, which is now cut off at 10 o'clock, but during music festivals, they're allowed to go until 2:00 AM at 85 dBs, and that's in keeping with the intent of the original noise ordinance, which was to allow music.
Okay. Now, how does that change what the city clerk was reading then?
He has the answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. DeVito.
I'm sorry.
Well, if you go a little further over at, what is it? A little further over, we can see here that you have to have an annual permit is required. Businesses having a restaurant license and permitted outdoor seating shall obtain a permit for sound amplification from the office of the mayor or the city clerk before operating sound amplification equipment permitted under this article. The only sounds permitted to be amplified under this article are music and the human voice. So that, that covers the clubs there. I don't have a problem with actually adding city sanctioned music festivals, but I think we've, we've covered it here. Additionally, if you go back here, let's see, okay, in Part E, 7.16.07, "The duration of a special permit is one calendar day from midnight to midnight, except as permitted in Section A, or, and/or, except for officially recognized festivals," and I think that's where you're getting at, is officially recognized city festivals, music festivals, "or special events, when a permit may be issued for the duration of the festival for performances on property owned and maintained by the city." Well, that's a city thing, I guess, there, that last sentence. Sorry about that. So let's go back to that first. I think we're covered, the clubs are covered, but I have no objection at all of putting those, that wordage in there, so I think we ought to just do it.
Mr. DeVito.
I have no objection to the change in the wording, and I think it clarifies a lot.
Yeah.
Any further?
So where would it go?
It would be Section...
On the bottom.
17.16.07, "Special Events." Is that correct?
Yeah, 716.07.
And instead of, the last sentence, instead of "to exceed 85 dB for festivals," it would be, counsel?
We would strike the line for "festivals and special events" and replace it with "city..." What was the word you used?
Sanctioned "music."
Sanctioned, but there was another word that you said, "city recognized," or it was in the body of it?
Officially recognized, let's see.
Well, sanctioned satisfies that, and basically, you're just removing "for festivals and special events" and replacing it with "city sanctioned music festivals."
You want to add that to this?
I'm wanting to add that to the noise ordinance that's before us right now.
Well, actually...
So in Section 8?
No.
B8?
Oh, okay. What we're dealing with.
No, we're...
Where do you want it to go? Do you want it under B8 or 9?
It's not going to be part of this written part, it's just going to be in addition to, before amending.
It would be to vote on it.
Here is what we're considering. Where do you want this to go in this ordinance?
It shall be on the next second page, I think.
So that we can vote on it.
That's what James said, we just add that.
Mr. DeVito, jump in here.
Yeah, it's under Section A, it shall be unlawful too, and...
But if it, if the wording is already in the book, in an ordinance, and we're striking some words there, and we're adding some words, aren't we really amending the code that's in the book? It doesn't, that doesn't really fit in, it doesn't fit in here.
Yes, it can.
It can.
It doesn't have to.
But it can.
You can create a whole other ordinance to change the language of the book.
Oh, God.
Or this is changing the language of the book that you're considering right now. What you have in front of you will become code.
Okay.
If passed by the council and approved by the mayor.
Okay. Well, then we can stick it in there then.
Mr. DeVito.
It would be a separate, just like in, in the ordinance we have before us now, it says 171614, Motor Vehicles, Machinery and Equipment. We basically just have a line right above that that says 1716.07, and you basically have that one paragraph, and it's a category...
You can say what amended to read as.
It's a category of itself.
Okay.
This one. Go to this right there.
Okay.
171607 would precede just...
Okay. I really, okay, because I have the delight of weaving in ordinances that are passed at this table, I would encourage you to not assign numbers, because often, by the time we get there, that number has been claimed by someone else, the PD or someone else. So if you would please just say, not the number and where you want it to go, but in this ordinance that you are now considering, please add the verbiage to this ordinance, and it will be woven into the existing code. I'm simply asking you, where in this existing ordinance would you like the phrase added? And I will write it down and make sure that it gets...
At the top of page two.
Yes.
If you're going to go in numerical order, it would precede 71614, so 71607.
This ordinance that you're considering has no 1716 anything. This ordinance, 2209, where in this ordinance do you want it to go, and I will make sure...
It's not a 17.
Which one are you looking at, because this and this?
Oh. Second page. It's 716, not 1716.
Yes, it's not 17. There isn't a 17 here.
It's 716.
At the top of page two.
Okay. That clarifies things.
I don't care.
No, it's just, he was saying 17 and he meant 7. J. Vehicles, Machinery, J. Man and Sound Producing Devices. It shall be unlawful.
Section two.
Let her put it where she wants, if it is. Who cares?
I don't, I don't recall us striking the 71614.
We did. It's, that's what I have here. We have that number also. Instead of us trying to figure, why don't we just make the wording and let the clerk put it where it goes?
I would like the agreed-upon language, so I can write it down. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, we just read it out of, out of the current existing municipal code, which is, I'm going to give you the number for your reference for this existing code, it's 7.16.07, "Special Events," A. And then, do you want me to read it to you?
I would like the language in this ordinance that's about to be read for the second time.
Okay.
That you've all agreed upon.
Okay. The mayor or city clerk may issue special permits allowing the production of amplified sound in commercially-zoned districts to be extended until 2:00 AM and at a level not to exceed 85 dB for city sanctioned music festivals.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on that part, Mr. DeVito?
No. Not to throw monkey wrenches, but do you have a definition for "city sanctioned music festival"?
Well, the verbiage that's reflected in the, in the body of the original noise ordinance speaks to city recognized fest, I don't have...
Officially recognized festivals.
Okay. Well, let's just change it to officially recognized music festivals. I'm sorry. Officially recognized city music festivals.
How do you get to be officially recognized?
It goes before the department heads.
Goes through a process. Okay. Blues and all that stuff.
Everything. Mr. McClanahan.
Mr. Mayor, can, can you not, does the mayor's office not have the ability to approve a special event on its own accord, or?
Yeah, we, we run it through the department heads to make sure everybody signs off.
Okay, that's what I thought. So why would you want to leave out, or I guess you could, if, if somebody come along and had some type of special event that, that was a good thing for the city, and it was to require music, I mean, I guess they would just have to include the word "music festival" in their heading, even though it may not be a music festival. You know, I mean, it's, are we, are we cutting the hairs too thin?
Probably.
Mr. DeVito.
As, as you've heard here tonight, and as you are well aware of, noise is an issue in Eureka Springs. We're trying to lessen noise, and this is an effort in that direction.
I mean, an effort to, I'm really not sure I understand.
Well, 85 dBs until 2:00 AM in the morning is pretty loud.
Well, I understand, I'm, I'm not arguing that point, I'm just, you know, are we, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by potentially, you know...
Basically, all, all that would happen is on the permit, that definition could be made very plain by either the clerk or the office or the person that's asking for the permit, but it will ultimately be on a permit, and if, if that's just the definition that needs to go on, then that can be added on.
So that if they...
But it has, it does have to be addressed within the code, so we can follow that. Any further? Okay, we are about to vote on, a roll call vote, by the way, on a suspension of the rules to amend this on a third read.
And we have to approve that. And we have to approve that amendment first?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Amendment first.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's still a suspension, we have to roll-call it, so...
Well, are we approving the amendment, or voting on it?
You're, you're approving the amendment by a roll-call vote, to the city code which would reflect in, in this ordinance, should it be passed, with, with the definition that was just given to the clerk, by the council.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Five one?
Okay, now, we go back to...
She's found any?
Yes.
We go back to the ordinance as amended, and so I'm about to make a Mr. DeVito.
Okay, I'll move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-two oh nine as amended on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Six zero. Now, we have a motion to...
That is it, on that one?
No, she's got to read it.
Well, you want she reads it, yeah.
Well...
Read the title.
Third time we don't have to.
Thanks, ordinance two two oh nine, and ordinance adding a section to chapter seven point one six, noise, of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to address vehicles, machinery, and equipment, and sound-producing devices.
Now...
Now the motion.
Now, amend the motion.
Yeah, here we go.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two oh nine as amended on its third read.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Third read, oh, third read, okay. You almost got it round all the way through this time.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Six zero.
Good, thank you.
Sweeney Alley, we've talked about Sweeney Alley, yeah?
All right. Brings us onto number two, be discussion of ordinance twenty-two ten, be a third read, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open, Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-two one zero on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six zero.
Ordinance twenty-two ten, and ordinance vacating an unopened portion of Sweeney Alley.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two one zero on its third reading.
Second.
Stand by.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Seems like we've been talking about Sweeney Alley for months.
All right, brings us to number three, discussion of ordinance twenty-two eleven, be the second read.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
We have an ordinance that is amended, and then, there is the potential, I think Mr. Perkypile was going to talk about that, that this may be misnumbered, is that, was it, is that, is that true or not? I guess I'll ask the city clerk, is there something about the number we need to change to as part of the amendment?
It is misnumbered.
And what would the correct number be, please, ma'am?
Two two one three.
Two two one three, okay.
Rock Street is two two one three?
Two two one three.
Unnamed, unopened street, Rock, uh, ordinance number two two one three.
What did that change?
That's the email I got today, this morning, or?
It was misnumbered.
Eleven went to the Public Works Building, yeah.
Right.
So, this will be thirteen, two two one three.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, could I ask Mrs. Bricks to come up and give us just a very brief presentation of why these changes are here, and what has occurred with the other principle that's involved with this now, Marble Flats?
Yes. Hi, my name is Rachel Bricks, my husband and I live at One Magnetic, um, I think what I have is some good news to report in all of this.
Please.
Um, in response to our putting forth an easement proposal, Marble Flats came back with five things they wanted, um, through our attorneys, of course, and, um, even though all of the utilities supported the vacation, we agreed to all five. Um, and that's what's reflected in the ordinance that you have in front of you, a couple of the things didn't need to be reflected in that ordinance, so I just want to briefly address those. Um, number one, they wanted the easement to be specifically conveyed to them, if you'll remember, and you can see on your strikeout thing, it was just to the city, we weren't sure if that was really in the best interest of the general public, but we agreed, we didn't really see a problem with that for us. Um, number two, they wanted the width to be adequate for water sewer, um, I talked to both Bobby Ray and Dwayne, our director at Public Works, who said that seven and a half feet for each of those is sufficient, and he could even waive it, if necessary, to make it smaller, um, so we agreed to increase the width from the ten feet that was in the original ordinance to the fifteen. Um, we didn't really want to go higher than fifteen, just real quickly, um, because, uh, obviously, the seven and a half feet would be enough, but Dwayne had also mentioned he wanted to stay twenty feet away from structure, from a structure, for any new construction, and if we gave a twenty-foot easement, it would be sixteen feet away from our house, and it would probably even be closer to our garage, because, of course, the platted street runs in between both of those structures. Um, and at fifteen feet, the easement puts the easement twenty-one feet away, so that would be within what Dwayne wanted. Um, number three, they wanted the language for the encasing of the utilities to be removed, we removed it, um, and as a other thing, they wanted us to not develop in the easement area, our original thing coming with you folks was that we wanted to build a cottage up in that area, and we're nixing that plan, and not, and willing not to use thirty-four-hundred-and-fifty feet of our property or developer improve on it, so that they can have, uh, unmitigated access to the easement that way. And then, also, uh, we did agree to this, but this isn't part of the ordinance, um, because I, my attorney said it didn't need to be, but just so you folks know, that we, they wanted us to pay for half of the survey of the easement, um, my husband and I don't have a lot of money, so we just said, we'll pay up to two hundred and fifty dollars, we have no idea how much a survey costs, but we did agree to all five, including, um, we did put a cap of two fifty on that. Um, the only thing that they asked for, that we couldn't touch, according to our attorney, and I think Mr. Williams knows that as well, and Mr. Weaver, he may have even contacted you about it already, um, is that they want the city to give them an easement also from the end of our driveway on Magnetic over to the main line. I would guess that that would have to come from Dwayne and you folks, that has obviously nothing to do with us, so, um, we agreed to all five of the things that they asked us, that their attorney asked our attorney for, you know all that, um, but I just wanted to let you folks know that that's the changes in the ordinance that you have in front of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Bricks, while she's here?
I have a question.
Yes.
Well, maybe it's a question for the, for somebody's attorney, what is the significance of, um, the easement being granted to Marble Flats instead of the city of Eureka Springs? Does that have any legal impact on the city of Eureka Springs if the Marble Flats property is ever sold? Does that easement go with the sale to the new owners of whatever Marble Flats are?
Says or it's assigned.
Okay, so, is there, do you see any disadvantage to the city of Eureka Springs in that?
The chief disadvantage to the city of Eureka Springs would be that they would have no ownership at all, or no right to use that, it would be usable only by Marble Flats or its assigns or heirs.
Oh, and, but, and the only use that we're talking about are underground utilities?
And that would, they'd be for them to use it for underground utilities.
Okay, okay.
Uh, it couldn't be used for some other purpose by the city, as it can be now.
Okay, that's okay, I'm okay with that.
Um, I just want to say, any street or alley that's vacated, the city has no rights to it, this actually leaves utilities for really the only objecting persons.
Okay, and this, everybody's agreed to this, so this kind of puts an end to this, if we approve of this?
I'm guessing, since Mr. Williams isn't here, that...
I don't know about an end, but it's working towards it.
Okay.
Ms. Schneider, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm confused. You guys made an agreement, you guys and Marble Flats made an agreement over land that we would still have to vacate for this to be in effect?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Weaver?
Not, not only would you have to vacate that land, the agreement that I was told about would also call for the city to vacate its, or grant easement to Marble Flats on both sides of the proposed vacation now, to allow it to reach from Marble Flats' areas to the now-current, where they would have to hook on to sewer and water, and that, I don't know if anyone outside the parties has looked at, and it doesn't sound like, just a moment ago, that the parties have looked at real close, whether we even have that ability to grant that without condemning property in order to have that right. So, we may have the horse in front of the cart here with this agreement, sounds like a good agreement for certain people, but if the city has to go in and condemn land to give it to an easement, then it could be a problem there. And the reason I don't have any answer for you tonight is I heard from Mr. Williams at about three o'clock today, that they had come up with maybe a solution, and that they would let us know. I guess at some point between three o'clock and five o'clock, when I left my office, they must have came to some kind of conclusion, but I haven't heard exactly how they intend for that other property to, it, it's probably in the city's hands, but I don't know if anyone has confirmed that with the city.
Mr. Mitch?
What's before us is vacating Rock Street for the Bricks, who have negotiated from one end of their property to the other end of their property with Marble Flats, and they have no control over, outside their property, if, it seems to me, if Marble Flats wants to do that, they can go through the process, get their application, Mr. Williams is obviously real good at those applications, he seems to be, and so they'll be filling one out, but it doesn't make sense to, to take Marble Flats' issue with the city for other issues of vacating, and try and put it in here on this one.
Actually, it does, because that is part of the agreement between the parties, or was being addressed as part of the agreement between them, and therefore, it would be an enforceable interest potentially against Ms. Bricks, if the city didn't do that.
But how can she, how can she be responsible for property she doesn't even own, that Marble Flats is one, I, I'm, I'm not buying off on you there, but, okay.
Now, I think you better, what I was told by Mr. Williams is he couldn't be here tonight, and apparently, Ms. Bricks' attorney couldn't be here because he's out of state. I think you might want to, before you finish this, get the two attorneys in the room and question them.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that, that there's certainly headway, there, uh, confirmation from the attorneys, I don't know why, I guess they have other commitments is why they're not here, um, I'm concerned about that myself, um, that, and, and as to what type, type of document the city is going to be providing, because, um, if we pass this, as this is written right now, and, uh, I mean, as far as the city's concerned, we, we will vacate, but the Bricks have to provide an easement, not us, for them, that has to be prepared by someone and recorded, and, uh, as a follow-up to this. Also, I'm, I'm not sure of what type of document, if any, the city will provide to Bricks, because apparently, what, what, looks to me, what the city is, is doing is conceding they never owned it, or they don't own it, and I, and I'm, I'm not real happy with that.
Mr. DeVito?
The city had a right of way that isn't actually on the property, and this, this is only the second reading. We have adequate time for the attorneys to chime in, we have adequate time for all of these questions to be addressed, this is not the time to delay the vote on this, we, we have plenty of time after the second vote, uh, to address all of these issues before we finalize this on a third vote, so I say we go ahead with the vote tonight.
Mr. Mitch, Ms. Schneider, I'll get you next.
Let her go first, because I was going to make a motion.
Okay, would it not make more sense if we dealt strictly with a vacation of the property, and anything between Marble Flats and Bricks would be their own separate private contract?
No, because the issue is still, if they don't have a real agreement, whether or not, then that would still leave Marble Flats, Flats actionable against the city for cutting off their access.
Okay, then, in...
So, you need to be sure, in your mind, that they have a full agreement, and that agreement can be fully carried out, all terms.
Then, in view of that, and to continue on, don't you dare do that yet, I'm going to, I'm going to bring up again, law and legality. We cannot remove access to properties, and regardless of what Matt said at the last meeting, that they have to be abutting, he is wrong. Looking at the street that is there, if you take this little part that does not abut the fifteen, twenty properties that are on down that road section, if that's vacated, because those properties don't abut it, what does abut it is the rest of the road, you have just cut off all access from that end on all those properties, and that's illegal. Now, to give you, for instance, so you can understand, the city decides they're going to vacate ten feet of Main Street, from here straight across, it's going to be private property for whomever, this is vacated, to make sure no one trespasses, you put a brick wall up here, you put a brick wall up there, what have you just done when you vacated this to a private owner? You have cut off access for Main Street, this is what is the situation there, by law, we cannot remove access, access points, regardless of how many are there. I am not at all thrilled with the fact that you could have twenty access points, and it's illegal to get rid of one of them, I've hated that for years, but it's the law. So, we are going to be not only in trouble for that, there's quite a few other ones, and just to bring it home to you, really, really good, while you think about this, if you do this, if you cut this land off, and you deny the city and the private landowners that access point, you can almost be guaranteed of a lawsuit, and tort immunity ain't going to cut it, you guys are going to be sued individually, jury or judge could be a couple hundred, be a couple million, whatever, we are breaking the law knowingly, think about it before you vote.
But it isn't used as an access.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, Ms. Bricks.
Let's let Ms. Bricks make the call.
Just a couple of things, if that were the case, then no property could ever be vacated, ever, because by vacating something, you're cutting off somebody's access, you vacated one, two, as a matter of fact, Sweeney Alley just got its third reading tonight, there's been the McKeown, there's been the Nut Street, there's been all of these other vacations, there's a process in place for a reason. When you determine access points, um, I just want to point out that what we're asking to be vacated is in the Magnetic Base subdivision, which is up here, in the eighteen eighties, when the original plant was done by the Eureka Improvement Company, this subdivision did not exist, you can see the map on John Cross's wall, it was not here, this is Clayton Edition, that's why there's a section line here. This street here, which is Rock Street, comes out to Mill Hollow, and it was plotted to come out to Mill Hollow for all of these lots that are here. What we're asking to vacate has only been exclusive... What we're asking to vacate has only been exclusively used by this property and recently, Mr. Liu Han and Ms. Ina Cox, who both have supported officially and in writing, vacating. Everyone was notified, according to state statute, by certified letter, including the city of Eureka Springs, of this petition to vacate, almost a year, actually over a year ago, was May twentieth of 2013. Now, procedures have been followed. This plat was plotted that way and this was added later. Maybe access was meant to connect from here to here at some point. Obviously, it never has because it's a forest. But by saying that access is being cut off here, or you can't cut off anyone's access ever, is, is erroneous because there wouldn't be any procedures for vacating if that were the case. And we've already vacated five or six properties prior to ours.
I can give you two examples just like that. But that's Rock Street you showed where the properties are?
This is Rock Street, yes.
Right, and it's Rock Street in front of your house and you're asking to vacate?
It is not Rock Street. Our address would be Rock Street. Our address is Magnetic.
Okay, so this is what, last meeting I asked, I said, I'm getting so confused. First it was a street, then it wasn't a street, then it was unnamed, then it's the unnamed Rock Street.
Because this has gone on for so long and I've researched it so much and I've talked to Bobby Ray, I've talked to John while he retired from the post office. It's always been, even Mr. McAvoy, who lives on Chestnut, Chestnut's never been a road, but his house faces Chestnut, that's why his address was Chestnut. Obviously, our house faces Rock Street. It's six feet from it. Our address would be Rock Street if the thing was supposed to be Rock Street.
Oh, and those mailboxes around here are weird places.
I make a motion to.
Thank you.
amend the misnumbered ordinance number twenty-two eleven as follows. The ordinance new number will be, as per the city clerk, twenty-two thirteen. Going down the page, we'll be striking pursuant to Arkansas Code, annotated section fourteen dash three oh one dash three oh six. Going further down towards the end of the page, striking the words city, of, words city of Eureka Springs, adding the words Marble Flats LLC and Arkansas Limited Liability Company. Further going down, striking the words ten feet parentheses, number ten, adding the words fifteen feet parentheses, fifteen. Striking the words on the second page, fully in case.